Welcome back to the 2022 KBRF Radio News Debate. My name is Sarah Duffy and I am your moderator. Today's debates included the candidates for City Council from Wards Two, and now we will hear from our Ward Three candidates. The city of Fergus Falls is comprised of four wards. Each ward has a total of two council members with a total of eight council members serving on the city council. Ward One is in the southeast part of Fergus Falls. Ward Two is the northeast sector of the city. Ward Three is the northwest part of the city, and Ward Four is comprised of the southwest portion of the city. Each council member serves a four-year term. Again, today we've heard from our Ward Two candidates, and now we will hear from our Ward Three candidates. The election for these city offices will be held on Tuesday, November 8th, in the city of Fergus Falls between the polling place hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The polling place for Ward Three is located at M State. In the interest of time, I will not go through the procedure from today, but as a general matter, we will have two minutes for opening statements, two minutes for each question. If you want a rebuttal, please raise your hand indicating that to me, and I will give you 30 seconds for rebuttal. We will have a two-flag system to indicate the timing. We'll raise the red flag when there's, or rather, the yellow flag when there's 60 seconds, and the red flag when there's 10 seconds remaining. So now that we've laid the basic procedure and foundation for today's debate, we'll begin by meeting our Ward Three candidates. For Ward Three, we have Al Krameyer and Nathan Cundy. We will start with Mr. Krameyer with your opening statement.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you to KBRF and Leighton Broadcasting. As she, as Sarah mentioned, my name is Al Krameyer. I'm your candidate for Third Ward City Council. City politics is a relatively new endeavor for me. However, my devotion to Fergus Falls, dedication to making our community prosperous, safe, and inclusive for all residents and visitors is lifelong. I was raised in Fergus Falls and actively participated in abundant opportunities our community offered through church, athletics, coaching youth, recreational activities, and community organizations. I graduated from Fergus Falls High School in 1983, the Fergus Falls Community College in 1985, and attended the University of Minnesota Twin Cities and obtained a Bachelor's of Science degree with a major in mortuary science in 1987. Before returning to Fergus Falls with my wife Lorraine in 1996, I had opportunities to reside in urban, suburban, and rural communities, experiences that solidified my decision to return to the city I care so much about. We purchased our historic home at 923 North Vine Street in Ward Three, where we continue to live and work to restore it to its natural beauty. I became involved in community organizations, including J.C.'s, Lions, Kiwanis. In time, I grew my granite and bronze business, and we raised two daughters, Isabel and Helena. It meant so much to watch my daughters thrive in the educational and community opportunities available in Fergus Falls. I believe they were well-prepared to begin their new endeavors. Isabel now, her first year at law school, Helena, a college freshman, planning, studying political science and public administration. In recent years, I have become more involved in community planning and organization through my participation in the city of Fergus Falls Planning Commission, Heritage Preservation Committee, and the Center for the Arts Board. My work as a state and national licensed funeral director and state licensed insurance agent, I have been honored to work with thousands of our community members during the most difficult times with the goals of listening, learning, and aiming to meet their needs. My care and decision will help. Go Fergus Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cundy.
Good afternoon. I'm Nate Cundy. I'm also running for City Council here in Ward Three. I've lived in Fergus Falls since early 2018, and my family and I felt very welcomed by the community. One of the reasons I'm running for City Council is a way to be able to give back to the community we love and we have great pride in. I represent a unique opportunity for Ward Three to elect someone that isn't tied to pass dealings at the city level or have allegiances to other city officials, and I can truly represent. Ward Three is an independent representative and put the best interests of the community at the center of decision-making. I've been fortunate to live in several communities across the upper Midwest and feel blessed to have called Fergus Falls our home. These experiences have really provided me some different perspectives and visibility into what works in some communities, what isn't working in some communities, and what family values are growing, are in growing communities. I also serve as the vice chair on the Chamber of Commerce, current member of the Planning Commission, and the Heritage and Preservation Commission. These opportunities allow me to hear firsthand the feedback and concerns of our member businesses in our community. Infrastructure continues to be a major issue in our city, and with my background in the utility industry, I feel I'm well-positioned to help guide this effort by utilizing new technology and make data-driven decisions and provide transparent and accessible information about the projects being done. If elected, I'll continue to bring reasonable and data-driven approaches to decisions and openness to work with all to keep our community moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Krameyer, we will start with you with our first question. If elected, what are your top three goals for your term, and how do you plan to achieve these goals?
Well, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'd say roads and infrastructure. I know that is really top on the list. Also, too, the retention of current business, and also to aggressively seeking some new business and industry. I think if we can get, and we have 116 miles of roads in Fergus Falls, you know, that's a lot of maintenance. You know, we need to look at that budget. I believe we're at about almost $3 million for roads in 2023, but that budget, when we look at that, is not for all road construction. It has to do with snow plowing, sanding, you know, different, I believe there's some labor in there, too. So there's things of that nature that we really have to look at, and I think to really understand the budget, the person who knows the best about it is Bill Somer, and I think he's on vacation this week. But anyway, that's the guy that would be really good to talk to when it comes to finding out what's all in there. But, so we need to look at the road situation. We need to get the infrastructure built back up. Also, too, with the retention of current businesses, you know, how are we going to achieve these goals? You know, one of the ideas and one of the things that I've talked to local business people is that, you know, let's form this group. Let's go out and actually talk to these business people and talk to each other and find out what do they really need? What's going to make it easier for you? What's what makes it difficult? And I think, you know, Greater Fergus Falls does some of that, too. Also, too, with new business and industry, you know, actually going out, knocking on doors, going out in other areas of the area here, looking into Minneapolis. There's a lot of companies that want to relocate from Minneapolis to the rural areas. You know, Bemidji is a prime, prime example of that. They have been very successful in the past few years, and I think we can do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cundy.
Yeah, so my three goals would be to develop a comprehensive asset replacement plan with an outward-facing GIS for the public to access on the city's website, and we do that by working with the current city's GIS department, public works, and engineering. So the GIS really isn't a study. It's more or less a tool to organize all the data and studies that we've already done and be able to make that available to the public so we don't have to page through meeting minutes, PDFs, things of that nature. Next would be to continue to champion our community investments, so things like our parks, our bike paths, our riverfront projects. I'd like to ultimately roll these into our asset replacement plan and begin developing update plans for the current parks that we have. And then I'd like to develop a realistic roadmap moving forward on the RTC building. I think it's been sitting in limbo for quite a while now. Scott alluded to it, 20 years, and I think the city really needs to develop a firm roadmap with public input on that. So ideally, I'd like to see some ideas from the community, then a public vote held to determine what the majority of our taxpayers and citizens really want to see done with the thing.
Thank you. Rebuttal.
You know, I think also, too, what we really need to look at when we talk about technology and GIS studies, there's a lot of expense with that. You know, we're to the point where we really have got to look at what we're spending money on, and, you know, I think that we have to be very careful with things like that. I mean, we know what streets are bad. We know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the city, once again, this isn't a study. This is utilizing a database that the city already has. It's simply creating another layer on that. So we're already paying for the GIS services and already have the GIS people on staff to be able to do this. I just simply want to consolidate all of our information into one area.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question, but there is another question on roads and infrastructure where you can
There is.
Come back to it. All right. We'll start with Mr. Cundy on this question. What do you feel are the biggest challenges facing the city currently? What would be your plan to address these challenges?
Yeah, so I think there's actually two huge challenges facing the city right now. One is obviously securing the funding for asset replacements, right? I mean, everybody that you talk to talks about how poorly the roads are. So I think we truly need to sit down, go through budget, implement some cost-saving measures where they are applicable, and then maybe look at alternate funding sources if need be. I think the second one is about the amount of misinformation about city projects and city workings, and I think you have to basically solve both in conjunction with one another in order to be successful. So I think first, the city needs to take a look and see, like I said, what the cost-saving measures can make. You know, I actually like the plan that's been proposed, utilize some prairie pollinators and native grasses in area that don't require long-term mowing in some areas. Makes sense. I've actually used this approach on some of the substation rebuild projects to save on long-term mowing costs. However, I mean, these aren't cheap to get going, and they do require some increased amount of care before you start seeing the long-term benefits, but there is long-term benefit with that. And the second issue I really see is being more of a roadblock in our community. I said so many people, they just don't see how funding is secured or why this street got paved or fixed before another street did. So being proactive on our community or on our communication and putting it on platforms that are easy to access, that you don't have to go digging through link after link and PDF copies on the city's website to find information that's buried in meeting minutes. And the GIS later will really help with that clarity and transparency, but we'll also work, help with, set some clear directions and expectations with our city's communications manager. So we can develop some programs where you opt in the weekly information via email, text, et cetera, to get information in an easy to understand way and also in a timely manner instead of having to wait for print to come out.
Thank you. Mr. Krameyer.
As far as, excuse me, as far as the biggest challenges, I think it kind of goes back to the first question that we had. You know, the challenge is, what are we going to do with the roads? What are we going to do with some loss of business? What are we going to do with keeping existing business? And what are we going to do to aggressively seek new business? You know, to retain these current businesses, you know, it was great to hear that Amazon was coming in. You know, I find it kind of interesting in the time that it comes out. You know, there's a few things that I like to see that. The other thing, too, is the businesses downtown, you know, they're small businesses, which are fantastic, but we need to kind of look at to getting some big industry in here to move on with what we need to do to help offset these tax deficits, get our tax base built back up. You know, I've been, I've been very fortunate to have my brother, who is the president of the Greater Bemidji, and I have a lot of information from that on programs that they've done. And we need to seek those programs out and seek those businesses out and, you know, to go on with that as far as the soliciting these other businesses to come out, and we want to show them what Fergus Falls has to offer. I'm proud of my city. You know, I grew up here. I think we need to let that show to other people. I think we really have to watch our spending because we have to get that infrastructure built back up with those roads. And when it comes to the roads, I think West Seventh speaks for itself. That's one of the worst roads in town. You know, that's, that's in our ward. That's, that's a rough thing. And these are not just my ideas. These are the things that come up with the citizens of Third Ward. I'm listening to what they want. This is what they're saying, and we need to listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebuttal.
Yeah, I just wanted to reference, you know, Al brought up a good point about what's going on in Bemidji and what Greater Bemidji has been able to accomplish. We've actually taken that exact model that Bemidji's been using and have Greater Fergus Falls that has had, what, 55 new businesses since 2018 come into our community.
Thank you.
Is there another rebuttal?
I'll be nice today.
That's okay.
No, you can, you can say what you need to say.
Okay. I think that, you know, with, with Greater Fergus Falls has done a good job, you know, there is some similarities, but believe me, it's not the same. I do know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Al, we will come back to you on our third question. On Tuesday, November 8th, on the general election ballot, residents of Fergus Falls will be asked to determine whether or not a local option sales tax should be implemented for, one, an outdoor aquatics center, two, DeLagoon Park improvements, both of these projects or neither project. What is your position on these specific improvements and our overall maintenance and improvements of the city's parks and green spaces? One of the most, you know, in the public ones right now, too, is the, is Phase Two of the riverfront.
Right. You know, there again, I'm going to go back to the people of the Third Ward, and believe me, I've walked a lot of it. Listening to what they say, there is not a lot of support that I see for the aquatic center, the one, the people that I've door knocked and who actually came out and we visited. There's some who want it. You know what? I think it'd be a great thing. I think it'd be a fantastic thing. I think what we need to do is look at how it could be afforded. I don't think there should be taxpayer money used for that. Let's take an example for Park Rapid, or excuse me, Parker's Prairie. They put up a two-point, I believe, $3 million aquatic center. Now, that was privately funded. That was not taxpayer money. When we ratio it out to 880 people in that community, to 14,000 in our community, we should be able to raise 33 million, okay, privately to pay for this. So, you know, if we can do that, that'd be fantastic, if we can privately fund it. The people are still pushing the roads in, in Ward Three as I walk. That's the number-one issue that I see. You know, as far as DeLagoon, I think that's, that's probably a little bit more, I would say, reality-based, just because it's kind of already, it's a, it's a structure that's already there. I think what we really need to look at is couple beach on the other side, too. You know, if there was a swimming beach put at DeLagoon where the campers could use, but also, too, on the other side, I think what we could do is use that, use that to attract people, put some, put some money into that beach. You know, some years ago, they had to close it because they said they couldn't afford the lifeguard for it. You know, that's where a lot of us grew up, out of that lake, and it was a lot of fun. It has two bike paths going to it, on the east and west side. You know, it's, we talk about bike paths. It's a great natural resource that these other communities don't have. It's a lake that Breckenridge doesn't have or Parker's Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cundy.
Yeah, I support these needed projects 100%. Feel our community needs to continue to invest in its amenities and recreational opportunities to attract and retain families here. Workforce shortage continues to be a major concern with most of our employers and is often a limiting factor in current employers being able to actually expand. One of the ways that the, we can support that development is by having the amenities that families are looking for in a community these days. You can go across the nation and live in any community you want and find a job these days. So it's, it's kind of flipped the script where you used to relocate to a community for a job. Well, now you're choosing the community first, finding a job second. As I said, as mentioned, you know, I feel that the park should be part of our overall asset replacement plan and updated periodically. Certain green spaces definitely could be turned into prairie pollinator or native grasses to help with long-term maintenance and costs, but I think those should be completed in a strategic way, in a way that it adds value to the area and not solely done as a cost-saving measure, really needs to fit the scene.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to our next question. Mr. Cundy, roads, roads and infrastructure have been a big topic in Fergus Falls for the past several years. What is your understanding of how road projects are planned and funded and how the city council is involved or not involved in making these decisions?
Right, so I'll give my quick take on, on this, but I'd like to focus more on how we can maybe improve on the process. So currently, there's a capital improvement plan, which I believe is like a rolling four or five-year plan. You can find a PDF copy of it if you go digging into the city's website for it. It doesn't provide much documentation as to why certain projects are getting priority over others, and it also doesn't lay out a long-term plan for the remainder of our city's infrastructure. Funding is made up from several sources, and a lot of that depend, is dependent on which roadway you're actually talking about, but most of the municipal only-use roads come from out of the city's general fund. But my plan would be to, once again, utilize our GIS database to house and compile any historical data, such as past studies that we've done on roads, water mains, storm sewer, et cetera, and then develop long-term replacement plans for all of the city's assets. When the city builds a new road, it shouldn't just forget about it until it falls into a state disrepair. We need to start planning immediately when, when optimal time is to do maintenance, such as seal coating, mill overlay replacement, if even that's 30 years from now, we should start planning that day one. This allows us as a city to make data-driven decisions and be able to forecast out future needs and prioritize those. But most importantly, I want this to be accessible to the public. I mean, would you like to have a map where you can click on the street, know that a water main is getting replaced in your neighborhood in the next three years, rather than get notified a couple months in advance without having to dig through meeting minutes and reports? I know I would like to have that information and actually be able to see what's going to be done long-term. You know, I work with the GIS databases every day. Like I said, I develop a lot of asset replacement plans in the utility industry. I know how valuable they are. I know what they can provide and especially aid in formulating long-term asset replacement plans.
Thank you. Mr. Krameyer.
So roads and infrastructure, that is a major topic. You know, like I said, 116 miles of roads in Fergus Falls. How that money comes in for these roads? There's approximately in a city fund of about $452,000, excuse me, yes, $452,920 in the Streets and Highways Fund right now that is projected for 2023. Now, also, too, they'll receive approximately $1.1 million from the municipal state-aid street system, which 25% of that can be used for city streets. The other 75% has to be used for state roads, and that money can be banked over the years. So that's where we're kind of getting some of these funds. Also, too, actually, the amount that's listed for 2023 is $1,133,609. The other, some sources of funding, might be some special programs. The other one is the American Disabilities Act, too. There might be some, there's, there's resources there at some point in time also. The, kind of as far as a breakdown on how some of these roads are done, and we have predictive maintenance, which is usually like a seal coat with some grit, there's preventative maintenance, which is a mill and an overlay, and then there's emergency repairs with sewer water if there's something major. Our, we're back into this ER repairs. A lot of our roads are in desperate, desperate need. As I mentioned, I, at one point in time when we were speaking at another venue, West Seventh, I was talking to the contractor there. He says these, these sewers are paper-thin. This could go anytime. In my own neighborhood, last year, we had a break, and they couldn't figure out where to shut the valve off, to shut the water off. So with that being said, we need to really look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go to our last question. We'll come back to Al. We all want to have pride for our city. What do you think are the greatest assets of Fergus Falls, and what do we need to do to keep moving forward and progressing?
Well, I think there again, it's people and our location. You know, we have an abundance of natural resources. We have lakes. We have 1,000 lakes in Otter Tail County. Otter Tail County, 15 years ago, was listed in the top 10 second homes in the United States in U.S. News Today. You know, of course, that's 15 years ago, but we haven't lost a lot of that. You know, there's, there's great people here. The other thing, too, is these natural resources that we have. We have lakes, we have a river, we have the nice parks, we have bike paths that have been made to go to these places, and I think that's a really nice amenity that we can go to these natural resources. And I think what we really need to do is stay focused. We need to pick a project and go with it. You know, for example, we looked at, you know, what, around Lake Alice. It was half-finished, and then they, two years ago, they did some more road repairs, but the streetlights are not out there. You know, we need to stay focused. We can't get confused by some kind of a glimmer that detracts our focus from what we need to do, because once we get these other things taken care of with business, industry, retention of business, that tax base is going to come up, and we're going to be able to get these things. You know, I think that's what we need to do. So I, you know, I'm up to challenge the people. Speak up. Speak up. If something is bothering you, you need to speak, because otherwise, you're not going to be heard. You know, so my goal is to have the people of Fergus Falls be involved, because I sure heard it out in the boards. I just wish they would come in here and voice it, so they can tell them, tell you themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cundy.
Yeah, so I think our city has a lot to be proud of. I think it's safe, it's friendly. As I said, some of our greatest assets our city has, like Al said, are natural resources. I think the amount of outdoor activities and recreational opportunities are in our community is absolutely fantastic. So to keep progressing, we need to continue to support one another in our community efforts and continue to develop and build these public-private partnerships that really can provide long-term benefits to our community. Like Al said, we need the public input, buy-in from all demographics and perspectives within our community to help us find those unique opportunities for resources and different value-adding projects. I believe a lot of that starts with developing better communication from our city to our citizens, and I hope to work directly with our communications manager in the council to be able to develop newest type of communications on different platforms, whether that's even push communication, where you can opt in for text messages with links or weekly email. Once again, I think combating a lot of that misinformation that might be out there and misconception. And once again, I'm going to plug the GIS again. We have the tools available. We have the staff available. We can use that as our one-stop shop, where you can click on an asset and see, here's where the funding source came from, and be able to get all that information without having to dive deep into our city's website and archives to gather that information. So I think one is just communicating better with our, with our city, being able to actively listen to them, and then developing a plan and using the tools that we already have.
Thank you. All right, we will go into our closing statements. We will start with Mr. Cundy. Two minutes for your closing statements as to why the citizens of Ward Three should vote for you.
Yeah, I'll actually probably keep it short here. Like I said before, I don't necessarily have a whole lot of close ties to the community. I'm not affiliated with any of the past dealings that have been had in the city. Just a unique opportunity that I feel the need and the urge to be able to give back to, to the community, and I feel that this is a way that best suits. Once again, infrastructure continues to be the biggest hot topic of this election cycle in our city facing right now. I do asset replacement plans every day. I execute them. I do the construction. I know the tools that it takes to do. Used to dealing with large budgets, personnel, addressing public utility commissions, et cetera. So I feel like it's a unique opportunity that I can fit the bill for that. And once again, I just promise to bring a reasonable and data-driven decision process making and being able to be open to working with all council members and all the public.
Thank you. Mr. Krameyer.
Well, there again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. With a closing statement, I really want to challenge the people of Fergus Falls to realize what needs to be done. These are not difficult decisions to make. We don't need a lot of technology on this. If I can see a sewer pipe that's failed, I think we know it's time to replace it. You know, there's a lot of great things about this city. That's why I'm back here. I'm from this community. I can't help it that I'm from this community, but it's where I came from. We moved here in 1967. I've been gone for a few years, of course, but you know what? It's Fergus Falls. I just talked to my nephew today in Columbus, Ohio. When my brother retires and gets rid of the lake home, he's going to be moving back here because he loves this area. You know, that's what I think is really neat. You know, you come back, you try to be productive to your community, and I'm honored to be back here, really am, and I appreciate all the people. I just want to leave you, too, with this. When I envision a future of Fergus Falls, I envision a city that honors its history, is strong and prosperous, is present, and embraces the future. I envision the future generations living in and caring for historic homes and structures. I envision a strong economic community, which supports a strong tax base and offers opportunities for education, employment, and advancement for all its residents. I envision a downtown bustling with shoppers and visitors. I envision businesses, industry, recreation, and a service industry that appeals to all residents of all ages, interests, and backgrounds. I envision a city that grows and is ready to support that growth, with most of all, I envision a city that is strong, prosperous, and whose citizens are proud to call it home. Thank you. I'm Al Krameyer.
Thank you. Thank you to our Ward Three candidates, Nathan Cundy and Al Krameyer. As a reminder, the election will be on November 8th, and Ward Three residents vote at M State. This will conclude our city council debates. We will be back next Tuesday from noon to 1:00 with our Fergus Falls School Board candidates.